Hello, Ron.
Hey there, Chase. Haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, I know, huh?
Wow. Well, your luck runs out every once in a while.
Well, twice a month at least, right?
Right. You been working from home?
No, no, I live in Prosser, so it's nice to do this meeting from home.
That's what I'm saying. You, you, have you been working from home?
Not that often. Been in the office most of the time. We push so much paper, it's just easier, you know. Spend a lot of time in the office.
I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I'm, I could have snuck home, but I decided to stay here because I got stuff here that I might have to refer to.
Yeah.
Or look like I'm doing something.
I got a nice, pretty decent setup here because early on I worked from home a bit, but
Good.
Transitioned back into the office.
Hi, Ryan.
Good evening.
Hi, Melissa. I am from my health district.
Hello, hello.
Hey, doctor. I guess I was muted. I'm sorry. Fine, thank you. Well, this is up, this is the part where we sit and stare at each other.
Got any good jokes?
Nothing I can say here. Well, I, I could say I took, actually took some time off after 16 months and I went horseback riding.
Oh, well, good for you.
Yeah, and I was doing fine until the horse took off and started going really fast and I was bouncing all over. But to, to, what saved me was the manager came up and unplugged it.
That was a good one.
It was a good one.
That was the only one I could think of right offhand.
I didn't even see it coming.
Did you really get time off, though? Or was that a joke, too?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Did you get time off or was that part of the joke, too?
No, I actually, I did attend some meetings, but a couple of weeks ago, I actually spent most of my time at home for, for the whole week. I hadn't taken off more than a day or two since last January.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I took some time off and puttered around the house a little bit, but I still had to attend some meetings. I couldn't get away from that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Andre.
Good evening, all. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
All right, well, we're starting to get everybody aboard here. Good evening, Doctor Atterbury.
Good evening.
Yeah, hello, Doctor Atterbury.
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
There's, there's the man, Nathan.
That's for an answer.
Hello, Nyla.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Well. Ah, there's Commissioner McKinney.
Sorry, he just kept spinning and spinning and spinning.
Mine did, too.
Yeah, I got, I started to get a little nervous.
Now hopefully Commissioner, oh, there he is. I was just asking about you, Mr. Commissioner Lindy. Wondering.
I'm here.
Well, so far I see two board, three board members.
All, all six of the board members that are going to be here are, are present.
Oh, okay. I'm just not seeing them then. All right. So, well, it's 5:30, so I guess we'll begin then. Welcome to the meeting of the Akama Health District. The meeting is scheduled from 5:30 right now to 7:30. I want to make sure that we are really respective and considerate of everybody's time. So if we can, if we have any issues that are not completed or we're not satisfied with, we'll, we'll carry them over to the next meeting. As we reach the time, I'll, I'll ask for discussions to continue to our next meeting, so just wanted to clarify that, make sure that we are and also I want to make sure that we are respective of everybody's being able to make comment and, and have their own input on whatever subject we're talking about at the time, so I will call the meeting to order and ask Ryan, our COO, to make a guest and staff introductions.
All right, Dr. Clary, citizen member. Dr. Clary is absent tonight. Commissioner McKinney. Commissioner McKinney's here. Okay, Commissioner Lindy.
Right here.
Mayor Patricia Byers, city representative.
Present.
Nyla Duval, city representative.
Here.
Dr. Atterbury, citizen representative.
Present.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
And board chair. All right, Yakima Health District staff, we have Andre Fresco, executive director.
Present, thank you.
Myself, Ryan Ibach, chief operating officer, Chase Porter, senior finance manager.
Present, good evening.
Melissa Sixberry, director of disease control. All right, Melissa's here.
Here, I'm sorry.
All right. Lillian Bravo, director of public health partnerships.
Good evening.
Sean McGee, director of environmental health.
Present, good evening.
Nathan Johnson, local emergency response coordinator. Dr. Larry Yekka, health officer.
Here.
Wendy Garcia, public health technician. Victoria Reyes, administrative assistant.
Present.
James Elliott, Yakima Health District attorney.
Good evening.
And then if anyone else could, anyone else present could be, put their name in the chat and also any affiliation that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and if you would then continue on with any review of written comments.
Okay, we do have two written comments that have been submitted to be read to the board. At any point during the meeting, if the board would like to address any of the comments or answer any of the questions, feel, feel free to do so. So the first comment that we have is from Spencer Hatton. He writes, "I want to focus on the responsibilities of the chairperson as set forth in your newly revised bylaws for the board. You have a serious problem. It lands squarely on the principles of impartiality and appearance of fairness. Under your new structure, you fell on both counts. The question should not be if the chairperson can vote, but under what circumstances? Often, the chairperson refrains from voting and instead oversees the discussion of motions that are to be voted on. The underlying principle here is impartiality. The chairperson votes when there is a tie, and that chairperson has only one vote. Those are the rules. Under the board, under the board's new, newly revised bylaws, the seven-member board will always have one of the three county commissioners as chairperson. Why such a strong-armed approach? Again, the chairperson should be viewed as a facilitator. It should be someone selected from the entire board with skills and demeanor that are up to the job. These bylaws now grant the chairperson unprecedented powers of possessing not one but two votes. Why invest these superpowers to the chairperson who must, under the new bylaws, always be a county commissioner? In this design impartiality and, and with the, and with it, the appearance of fairness, our toss aside, how is that going to promote public trust? I ask you to revisit your bylaws and reaffirm the guiding principles of one person, one vote." Then the other, the other written comment is from Angie Gerard. "Since the months of out, since the months of outcry, letters to the editor, over 60 public comments to this body, vocal and written comment at boarded county commissioner meetings, a petition with over 300 signatures, legal opinion, and the necessity, necessity for the Board of Health to hold special meetings are apparently not going to convince the commissioners to rescind or even alter their change, changes of the county code 6.04, I have taken another tack. What are health members, employees of the Akama Health District who truly want to work collaboratively, who value science, evidence, and diversity of thought, who want to serve those most in need rather than a personal fanbase, and who understand that the devicesness has been, has been and will continue to be our downfall? I ask of you, how can I help? How can you, how can your supportive county residents help? We have tremendous potential, yet have traditionally performed much worse than other counties in areas such as obesity, sexually transmitted infections, teen births, premature death, children in poverty, and severe housing problems. Akama Health District is more than just COVID response, and it could be more than just those who make up the employees in the board."
Thank you, Ryan. Now we'll, we'll move on to item number four, board business, and executive director Andre Fresco will be, be presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Good afternoon. I guess it's good evening now. Thank you and welcome to our colleagues, our board, and certainly the public. Appreciate your time and for taking it in the evening. I'd like to begin with a discussion that we had at our last meeting regarding the state of health, public health documentary series. The board had asked me to look into some specific questions that board members have, specifics that were lacking in terms of the organization called Radical Media that's actually conducting this documentary in the state of Washington. So I did speak to Tommy Arbison, who's the director, and she gave me some direction. The, the documentary itself is being paid for currently by Bloomberg Philanthropies. That's Michael Bloomberg and philanthropic arm that pays for things just like this. They are looking for a partner who will distribute it like a network, and that's called the acquisitions process. They do not have an answer yet about who would be acquiring that. So full disclosure, that has yet to be determined. The board had asked about creative control, or I guess what you would refer to as artistic license. That rests firmly in the hands of the director and the producers of that documentary. I certainly made clear that if we were involved, the goal would be to certainly position around positive discussions in public health. But again, that creative control lies with them, and I would also share that part of the creative control will lie with whoever acquires this, this entire series. I did want to share with you, I understand it to be a series, so they'll have a number of parts. I'm not 100% sure how many parts there would be, and I would assume it would be between 30 minutes and an hour apiece. Certainly, there would have to be a descriptive portion to discuss what public health is, and certainly, public health relationship with the vaccine. I think that equity has been a big part of discussions around the country around vaccines, so I think that would be part of it, and certainly, we would be featured in one or more of those episodes. The question came up about what was the point of the documentary, and it really is an impact discussion to educate people about the value of public health, and so it would be a broad audience to make them aware of, of what happens in public health behind the scenes, and that would be an everyday audience, if you will. Those are the things that I know, but I did want to share with you that again, Radical Media would have creative control. They're looking to finish this probably in the next month to two months. And I'm happy to entertain any discussion or answer any further questions that the board has.
Anyone like to comment or make, make comment or ask questions?
I just want to say thank you, Andre, for looking into it and answering those questions. I know that
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner, it's very difficult for us to hear. Your, your sound is very low.
How if I speak really loudly?
There you go.
From one Zoom to another, it's different. So if I get too loud, please tell me. I, I just wanted to say thank you to Andre for looking into those questions that the board had asked. I, I know that some of it, clearly, they just weren't able to give us firm responses because it, you know, they're, they're, they're just not able to. I'm honored that they would come to us, but I, I, I actually think that it would be not the best time for our community to endeavor in something like this when we have so much more to focus on. And I am concerned about, most importantly, the fact that we would not have any creative control, especially when you note that it's a series that would be purchased by some unknown buyer. And I, I would just, I would like to see this as an opportunity to bring the light, the opportunity that we could have to do something that we can produce locally where we can control the narrative. I think it's a great idea to shine some light on our community, but I would prefer to do it where we were in control of the entire narrative.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a quick question from Mr. Fresco. Do you know what is the I'm sorry. Like what? Right, right now, they want to get it done soon, correct? Because we have the mass vaccination site going on now. How many places in the United States were selected for this mass vaccination site?
Thank you, Mr. Duval. For this particular mass vaccination site, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, Ryan, but we're one of 22 sites. We're the only site in Washington State. We are unique in, in being a small rural community that received the nation site. Others are, I think, much larger, more, more city-focused, larger numbers. But we're one of 22 in the country that is Nathan, am I correct on that? I believe I am.
I, yes, those numbers may have changed over the last maybe week or so because you may is working on approving additional sites, but at the time of our approval, I think it was right around that 22 range. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? Okay.
I would like to comment briefly, if I may. And I understand from your email, Commissioner Anderson, that there is no proxy vote because Dr. Clary had contacted me and I looked at parliamentary procedure myself and realized that that is not a permissible unless it's in the bylaws. However, I would like to just simply share his opinion, if I may, on anything that comes up. And so his opinion on the the documentary discussed at the previous meeting, I believe that it will paint Yakima in a very favorable light. That was what he had to say about it. I think it could possibly, for myself, I think it could possibly, you know, be very helpful. I, but I also am concerned that we have, we have no input in terms of all of the message. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just say, I understand that if if I've learned anything in my years in Yakima, you want to control the message, and I, I would state that I agree with Commissioner McKinney's position, and that is not being able to control the message, or at least the narrative of the message, though I would love to think that they're going to write a favorable piece about Yakima. It makes me very hesitant to try and support that because we don't know that that's the case, and we would have no control of it otherwise, so that makes me concerned at the very least, and probably concerned enough to, to not support the measure, in my opinion, because of that one fact. If we had artistic license over in any way, shape, or form, I would support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Doctor.
Commissioner Anderson, if I could interject, yeah, I'm kind of torn on this one, to be honest. I mean, I certainly see some potential for, for some, you know, a positive, you know, positive image to be portrayed, but I just, I just don't know if, if we, if we have that promise. And I guess I'd get back to what Dr. Atterbury just said about the, you know, some kind of, you know, some kind of put into the creative process or, you know, the finished product. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm just torn about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Others? Well, if, if I may take
I, I, I'm gonna try to say something without my son being heard. He's kind of loud. I, I just wanted to say that I really disagree. The, this media group is coming to us, asking for permission to work with us, and I, I really do feel like if this will be a really lost opportunity for us to showcase the value and the impact of public health in, in the Yakima County, so I really hope that you guys reconsider and hopefully move forward with getting this documentary series done here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Your son certainly has creative control. That's good.
May I speak again? Commissioner Anderson, may I speak again?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I think my concern, as I expressed, I think it's a great opportunity for positive exposure, but my concern, again, is having any control over the content. And I think that the idea of, of providing an understanding of the value of the public health and the public health district in our county is vitally important, and I think that we have the ability within the county. We certainly have the skill within the county and the information within the county to do a video about the public health, public health district, everything that it does, how accessible it is, and all the services provided. I, I think we could do that ourselves if there was an opportunity or funding to do so. I think it's important, particularly right now, that the, that the community receives information about the public health district. You know, I think that's the critical thing for me, is that it's a great opportunity to get information out. But I think that we, you know, we could, we could provide that for our county because that's, that's who we want to educate.
Mayor, just a clarification on my part. When you say we, do you, are you saying, like, we have the, we have companies here in, in the valley that we could hire to do this and have control of the, the board could have control of the content? Is, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a follow-up question to that. Currently with, with this proposed documentary series, what would it cost the health district right now if we were to move forward with it?
Thank you, Ms. Duval. There's no cost related to it. It would be staff time, obviously, to be part of a process like that, but there would absolutely be no cost to us.
Commissioner Anderson, are you looking to entertain a motion?
I was just gonna ask that.
I, I would motion that we do not take part in this documentary and ask staff to advise them that we're grateful for the opportunity, but not at this time.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
His motion are seconded by Dr. Atterbury. Discussion? I think we've had a lot of discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can, just for clarification for mine, because all I can see is, could you just raise your hand?
Are we actually can we do a roll call? Yes, Ryan, would you manage that?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. That's a good point. Thank you.
So the motion is to not move forward with the documentary. And so please either reply either aye or no. Commissioner McKinney.
Aye for not moving forward.
Commissioner Lindy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Nyla Duval.
No.
Dr. Atterbury.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
All right, so the motion passes on a five to one vote.
Thank you. Director, would you like to continue on to the next item?
Yes, thank you. The next item is graduation commencement ceremony guidelines. We had discussed at our last meeting, specifically Commissioner McKinney had raised her interest in discussing details of that process and possibly changing that. I wanted to share a few things, and if I may, again, these board businesses are under my name, but it's a collective effort, so Commissioner Anderson, I'd like to ask for the input of our other staff as well on some of these issues.
Sure.
Just interject, I'm sorry, Dr. Fresco, I believe that I had made a motion at the last meeting and it was tabled, so does that motion still carry to this meeting?
Well, we are in a special meeting. I suppose that it could carry, but I do think that it that there should be discussion on this issue.
I know, I'm just, procedurally, I believe that it was specifically, it was tabled to further discuss as a board at this special meeting, which is why it's on the agenda.
Yes, correct. You had and so, or I don't know if we're at the time to discuss. I think you had made a motion. I don't know if that had been seconded. I honestly, I don't remember, Ryan.
Yes, yes, and it was, I believe, Victoria was, it was a motion was seconded, is that correct?
Yes, it was.
So then we would be at discussion.
Commissioner McKinney, does that, does that sound correct?
That's great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were in formal discussion of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So one thing I wanted to begin with is to share that the governor has, has made, has shared direction that on April 15th, which is actually tomorrow, there may be further discussion or changes to the outdoor venues for graduation. So we, we anticipate knowing something tomorrow. Tuesdays and Thursdays is normally when the governor makes announcements, but that was normal, regularly scheduled. I believe I'm correct on that, Ryan?
Yes, that's correct. As part of the, the spectator events guidelines on page two, it states on April 15, 2021, conditions will be reevaluated to assess whether a further increase in percentage seating capacity can be allowed.
So I did want to share, and I'm going to be asking for Dr. Yekka's discussion on this as well. I wanted to share that historically, the way the state law works is that the state has legal authority, and then we can be more restrictive, but we are not legally allowed to be less restrictive. So if the state has made a state law, we have to follow the guidance. It's not an, an advice, it's a mandate. we have to follow the guidance. It's not advised, it's a mandate. And we can be more restrictive, but we can't legally be less restrictive. So I wanted to share the reality of that. And I also wanted to ask for some input from our staff. Dr. Yucca, I'd like to hear from you, sir, on this issue of reducing restrictions on, or I should say, Commissioner McKinney, increasing the allowance of graduation venues above the four hundred person limitation.
Correct, and staying at fifty percent of the maximum number allowed for outdoor spaces.
Well, I've been in the game a long time. I have never, it's always been, whether it's Kansas or this state or federal government, you can, you can always go stricter, but I've never seen you can't go more lenient. So that's my understanding. It's always been over the years I've been in public health, unless there's something changing now, I don't know of it. But I know there's, the other factors that we have to consider is, you know, we are in phase three yet. But now our 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 statistics are not going the right direction. We are still having a lot of hospitalizations. In fact, right now, today, we wouldn't really meet the phase three guidelines. So hopefully the next few weeks will will be better for us, but we don't even know what phase we're going to be in at time of graduation is another factor. Hopefully, the governor will make some decisions, make, I hope they're, I hope they're good public health decisions coming tomorrow. We ought to see, I think, I would feel that we should wait and see what those are going to be before we jump in and and do any differences. And plus, I think getting closer, a couple more weeks, we're gonna know a lot more of the, I I think the 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 number of cases we're having in our community, because we're really, we've had Easter break, we've had a lot of celebrations and so over the Easter type. So I think those, if we can get through this next two weeks, will be a lot better understanding of what we should be doing during graduation.
Thank you, Dr. Yucca. I I know Commissioner Anderson, that we have to certainly leave time for the board to have a discussion, but I did want to share that there are legal concerns about not following state law. So I would hope that we can hear from James Elliott, our Yakima Health District Attorney, to discuss the potential for what would happen if we didn't follow state law.
Well, I think there's a couple of things here. The the hard part last time about being in a meeting and other business having an issue of graduation get brought up. I I had not looked at the graduation commencement ceremonies documents prior to that meeting. I didn't know it was coming up. I I would say, I want to go, one of the things that Dr. Yucca just pointed out about what phase we're in, it it's actually interesting to me, but on April ninth, which would have been last Friday, both DOH and the governor had actually made a change to some specific language in the spectator events requirements. So in your board pocket, and Victoria, if you have this, it would actually be the fourth page. It would be the second page of the spectator events. That's the first page. Keep going to the fourth page. One more page. Yeah, one more, right there at the top. So one thing that was was interesting is the these guidelines came through and at the very top, Dr. Yucca mentioned, we don't know what phase we're going to be in. I think it's important that the information that came out on the spectator events actually said that school graduation ceremonies may utilize phase three if they operate under event. So even if you're in guidance in phase two, excuse me, so school graduation ceremonies may utilize phase three spectator events guidance in phase two. If they operate under event health safety plan and all other aspects of graduations must be followed. So one thing I would say, and and I'm thankful for this because actually this helps the schools who are actually trying to plan these graduations. But I would point you all to that language while Dr. Yucca talked about the potential to move back on May third to phase two. That actually would not affect this issue as it relates to what section we're looking at. So I'd point that out first. And I do appreciate, and again, I apologize, last two weeks ago, I had no idea this issue was coming up. So one of the other points that got brought up earlier was this April fifteenth. If you'll see on the same page, we're looking at related to outdoor venue. The third bullet point that's on there says April fifteenth, they'll be reevaluated. I don't know what that means. All I know is the idea that there could be a further increase in percentage of seating capacity could happen tomorrow. I think that's definitely important for this board to keep in mind as it relates to the question that's been raised. As it relates to the overall graduation commencement ceremonies guidelines, Victoria, if you could, can you roll back to what would be the first page of these guidelines? And just some things that I saw. Now, that's a spectator events. Go, keep going back two more pages. Perfect, right there. So this is the set of guidelines that came out on March twenty-second. There's now been an update on April ninth. We just looked at a portion of what that effect was. But on this idea of twenty twenty-one graduation commencement ceremonies, you'll see in the second paragraph, it talks about, and I know it's not, it obviously in your board packet, you can see it as well. But it leaves discretion to the college, university, the local school district leader. So that's the first thing to keep in mind that each of these entities, college, university, local school districts, they have the discretion to act according to certain things. However, as that sentence reads, as long as they do not conflict with Governor Inslee's prohibitions outlined in the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Plan. So the school districts have the ability to make their decisions about what they want to do as long as it's not in conflict with these regulations as laid out. In addition to that, if you go down, it would be under the heading, it says graduation models and requirements. It's further stated a little bit more clearly on the third paragraph. K through twelve schools and colleges, universities must follow Governor Inslee's Healthy Washington Roadmap guidance for miscellaneous venues, outdoor spectator events, et cetera. That's the full packet that you have that would relate to each of these issues. And so the question really becomes this. I mean, can the school districts choose to ignore what Governor Inslee and what the Department of Health have said? They can choose to do that on their own, but obviously they take on their own risk in doing that, their own potential liability. If they want to go beyond what the governor has done, obviously, they're not allowed to do that. Pretty clear here, it says it twice. But if the different school districts at their discretion decide that they want to do that, they can. But they're setting themselves up for risk and liability if they do that. So it's one thing to keep in mind. Obviously, the school districts, they got the discretion. They can choose to avoid what Governor Inslee has to say or DOH. But right now, as the way that it's written, that risk or liability of changing and going beyond, and as I understand Commissioner McKinney's motion, it was essentially to allow for the fifty percent capacity of outdoor venues, even if that exceeds the four hundred, the four hundred being what's limited and identified in these guidelines. So if the school districts choose to allow more than that on their own, they can do that, but at their own risk and their own liability. To the extent that this Board of Health is going to be preparing a recommendation, and as I understood the motion from last time, as I watched it, the motion was that the Board of Health would recommend schools pursue plans allowing this. The only concern I have here, actually, I'm not the only, there's a couple of concerns I have here. If the school district decides that they want to do this on their own and essentially tell Department of Health and Governor Inslee, they want to do what they want, they can take on their own risk. If the Board of Health then makes the recommendation to the school districts to do this, essentially what the Board of Health then does is take on that risk or that liability that could come if something goes wrong. Now, I'm not going to go into all the potentials of things that could go wrong or anything. My job is to educate you as a board about what potential liability exists. If you are essentially directing them or recommending them to violate the Department of Health regulations or the governor's regulations, there's a potential, the Board of Health then takes on a potential liability for doing that. I would obviously advise against that sort of decision. One of the other things that should be pointed out here is we're looking at this graduation guidance that's on here. There's also another section in the final sentence of that same paragraph we were looking at that says, K through twelve schools and colleges should consider multiple smaller events that do not overlap if capacity requirements are limiting factors. So there's a built in opportunity for school districts to get spectators at a greater level, but just not to have overlapping events, have smaller events essentially. So that's one option for them. But again, if the question is, should this board make this recommendation to the school districts? I just want to warn this board, if you do that, you are creating a potential liability for the Board of Health on one level. In addition to this, and this is something we haven't discussed before, but in case this issue came up, I wanted to make sure that not only the Board of Health and the Yakima Health District, to one degree, if it was deciding to do this, creating its own liability. In addition to that, there are also, for violations of, under RCW seventy oh five, there are violations for either the health officer or administrative officer or even members of the Board of Health for choosing to ignore regulations related to DOH. So to one degree, and I will tell you where you can find these remedies, these penalties, these violations, it's in RCW seventy oh five point one two zero. It's a section that relates to violations, remedies, penalties. Subsection one essentially says that if the health officer or the administrative officer makes a decision that fails to follow, ignores or disobeys rules, regulations, orders of DOH, that the health officer and or the administrative officer can be removed. To one degree, if the decision is made to ignore these things, there could be an action taken in order to remove either the health officer or the administrative officer for refusing to obey. Additionally, and this is something, like I said, we haven't talked about before, but to the extent that the Board of Health makes a decision, I think each board member should be aware that under seventy oh five one two zero, there is also a potential for members of the local Board of Health who violate or refuse these orders to take on some of your own criminal liability. So not reading you the whole statute, but sort of the gist of it. And again, you can take a look at it on your own. Seventy oh five one two zero, subsection two says essentially, any member of the local Board of Health who shall violate or refuse or neglect to obey or enforce any of the rules, regulations of the State Board of Health, Department of Health, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and can be fined up to two hundred dollars. I would be remiss at this point in time, while I do not represent any of you individually in this capacity, as a Board of Health, you need to be made aware of a decision to essentially refuse or ignore as a board member under seventy oh five one two zero. So I raised those issues to you. Obviously, the question asked or directed to me was related to liability. Those are the areas that I saw. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have related to those.
Ms. Charlie, can you speak to the guidance and maybe Victoria can scroll up or down for outdoor venues that have permanent seating? So I think that the difference here is assigned seating is is one thing that they're describing. And so I'm sure, as has been the case with the Health District here in Yakima and across the state, there have been some creative ways for businesses to follow the rules. And this, I believe, is a very proper way to use the existing guidance, which allows for higher amounts up to nine thousand, I believe, assuming that that was a capacity limitation with the reduction for social distancing, as long as there were permanent assigned seating. And so the discrepancy that even the governor's office had has acknowledged is that there's a difference between apparently a seat, singular seat in the Mariners' field of play versus a permanent bleacher, let's say, in Zepel Stadium. I think all of us know that sitting in a seat or sitting on a bleacher is roughly the same. So what I would ask you is if there was a way to craft something where we advise them to follow those guidelines as long as they followed the spectator requirements for permanent assigned seating, which would mean that families would be assigned certain areas, maintaining masking and socially distancing. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can try and guess. I mean, I, your interpretation is just as good as mine on some of these issues. I think there there is some areas here that are unclear and and I have heard the same thing, that the governor's office was looking at sort of clarifying some of these issues. Department of Health was looking at clarifying some of these issues. I mean, this issue may get clarified tomorrow, for all I know, Commissioner. I I don't know. But I I mean, I think you can try and create all kinds of ways to try and move around things at certain times, but I'm just telling you, based on the language of the motion that was presented, the way the guidelines are written, that is where I have the concern of liability that I raised. So I haven't spent any time trying to figure out how I can sort of recreate what DOH or a governor's office did to try and work through this. Frankly, I looked at the April fifteenth deadline, which is tomorrow, not deadline, excuse me, but the April fifteenth timeframe and realized that they're reevaluating this. They're aware of the questions and concerns that have been raised across the state. Maybe this is an issue that gets dealt with. And so to me, I would prefer to defer and wait and see what the governor does tomorrow, rather than ask me to speculate how to work around it.
Certainly, I respect that. I personally don't want to wait to see what the governor has to say about this issue.
Commissioner McKinney, if if you would like to hear from Sean McGee and our staff in terms of what he knows and also to share in full disclosure that part of what we do normally with the State Department of Health, but specifically during COVID is try to gain clarity on these interpretations. It is a a difficult process to have state guidance that is unclear. So I recognize that the questions are legitimate. Sean, if you'd like to share what you know?
Yeah, so in reading these guidance and talking with DOH and and other folks in the state, what they're looking for when we go to the twenty-five percent per section or nine thousand spectator maximum, whichever is lower, to meet the criteria to be able to utilize that, it says open unreserved seating not allowed. So just an open stadium with bleachers or or seats that are, you know, no way to assign people to them. Facilities must also have controlled entrances and exits and the ability to monitor exact attendance. You know, that that one's pretty, pretty controllable. We we usually have designated entrances and exits and we can have staff counting people as they come and go. So that that one's not a huge concern. Now, when you're looking at like Zepel Stadium and it's all bleachers and it's not really broken up into sections, that's what they say is twenty-five percent per section or nine thousand maximum, whichever is lower. So if we can somehow break down bleacher seating in that stadium into sections or certain seating areas that accommodate groups, guests that are coming to see a family member graduate and and maintain that social distancing, this, that could qualify as reserved seating. Doesn't mean that, you know, necessarily, you know, Joe and and Mary are going to watch their kid. They have to see, sit in row one, seat A and B. But more that we have groups of seating for two, we have groups of seating for groups of four, and they're all spaced out. It's planned and it's controlled and the operators of that facility in that event know exactly how many people and where exactly those people are going to be sitting. So that that's the way I understand it works. It's not necessarily a reason to differentiate between a bleacher versus a chair. It's all about who can sit where, how many, and how far apart can they be? Can you maintain the social distancing at twenty-five percent per section or with, you know, the maximum of nine thousand people? So at Zepel Stadium, I don't think the maximum obviously would be nine thousand. But it certainly, potentially, under right circumstances, could be more than four hundred.
So Sean, I, a lot of folks are hearing that from their school districts who are planning graduations presently, that they are limited to that four hundred. And so I'm wondering, how would you word something to make it very clear that our Health Board and Health District were willing to approve plans that met this requirement, noting that they can section off and create these sections and and know that they could fit into that first guideline?
Well, I think a good place to start would be having some sort of like we've done with Little League and like we've done with Little League and stuff, some sort of plan set in place for these types of events specific to the venue. You take the, the seating, a seating diagram of the venue, and you break it down into certain sections and how many people can go into each section, and what areas are allowable for seating and what areas are blocked off to ensure social distancing. Get it down in a hard copy on paper, a visual representation of what it's going to look like, so they can implement that at the exact event. I think it's going to take more than just putting taping with duct tape or, or blue painter's tape Xs on the bleachers to get people to do that. Might have to implement some sort of, you know, ropes or some sort of barriers that kind of make it, you know, a little more organized and controlled. But according to this guidance, that, that would be a way to create unreserved open seating. So the first come, first served sit anywhere is, is not an option. It's, you gotta point people in the right direction. Like, oh, how many? Okay, we have seating over here for a group of this size. And that obviously will coincide with outdoor social gatherings guidance of, oh, what is it now? It's either ten or fifteen, but no more than two households. So that comes into play too. You can't just have like a group of twenty family members show up together and all sit together. It's, you know, there, there's limitations there as well.
And also Commissioner McKinney, to answer your question, I've, I've been contacted by a couple organizers of graduations, and so we'll definitely make that clear. You know, like you said, following under the guidelines, but maybe being creative on how we could do that. And also I tend meet with the superintendents every week, so I'll also make that clear in the superintendent meetings. Those different options.
If I could interject for just a minute. So, you know, as we look at these, as we look at these recommendations or guidelines, it's not lost on me that they, in the appearance, they, they, they seem kind of arbitrary. And when you look at the fact that you've got, on one hand, you've got indoor seating at fifty percent, but there are certain conditions where outdoor seating is only twenty-five percent. I mean, it, it just, you just, it just doesn't make any sense from a scientific standpoint. That having, that having been said, I, I, I'm more inclined right now, frankly, to just, just wait a day and see what the Governor says because who knows? I, I've got to think that he's got some pressure from, from people around the state because, because it is arbitrary. So that, that's just kind of where I'm at. I mean, it, it's not lost on me that these rules as currently stated don't make sense. But hopefully, hopefully we can learn tomorrow that, that some logic has, has interceded here.
Commissioner Anderson, I was hoping you could recognize Mayor Byers, who has her hand up?
Yes. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you, Andre. I have a couple things to say. First of all, Commissioner Lindy, I agree with you. I think that the guidelines have been arbitrary since day one. There's been lots of conversations with the Governor's Office about that. Having stated that, I also know that the guidelines right now, as put out by the Department of Health, are what they are. And I think it would be risky to, to make a recommendation that goes beyond that. Let me say, however, Sean and Ryan, particularly Sean, you have worked so effectively and so faithfully with the business community in this whole process in terms of how to be open and how to be safe and how to comply with everything. And I know that, that the Chamber of Commerce, Verlin Best from the Chamber of Commerce and yourself and other people on that task force reviewed hundreds of plans and went through those plans and followed through and did education, make sure everything happened the way that needed to happen. I think, you know, our schools, I think they're pretty smart. You know, first of all, they're going to make a decision no matter what we say in terms of whether, you know, they want to have graduation, how they're going to do it. That, you know, that's their prerogative. But the other thing is that, you know, they're smart. If we, if we give them the information that they need to work with and tell them, you know, that, you know, just submit a written plan, a visual plan, and then have yourself or other people, you know, with the Office of Emergency Management or the Health to look at and go, you know, that's a good plan. You know, that they should be okay to me to move forward. I also am very interested in what the Governor has to say tomorrow. And I don't think it's, you know, we, I know that we're pressing time, but I believe there's a, when is the next meeting?
Yes, the twenty eighth.
We, we would have one of two options. One would be to make a motion tonight that would set something in place that would be in agreement with the Governor's, you know, any expansion that he makes tomorrow. Or we could wait until the twenty eighth, hearing the expansion to make a motion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I, if I could, I might just mention, you know, my wife sits on the Sunnyside, Sunnyside School Board, and I can tell you that this point, that they are making plans, they're gonna, they're gonna do graduation on two nights. And, you know, her, her wish is just that the Health District be available to help with the plans. And, and I, and I appreciate Sean's comments about, you know, looking at ways to get this done. So that's all. Thanks.
Yes, if I, if I may add, Commissioner Lindy, part of our job as a staff membership at the Health District is to interpret what the state is asking for, find the limitations, find the opportunities, and then share that with partners. The, the relationship with schools has been long and deep during COVID, and our goal is to be of service. But I also want to share that part of my responsibility in serving the Board is to provide caution when we're making motions that would actually restrict our ability to interpret this work and actually put us not only in legal risk, but the potential for more state involvement. When Commissioner, or rather, I apologize, when James Elliott was discussing the concerns that could come to the administrator and/or the health officer, is also a concern about how the Health District as a whole operates. And so part of our job as staff is to interpret the law and allow for the support that we feel is necessary to support our partners, as you said, Mayor Byers.
And Andre, I know that the school districts appreciate your support.
Well, and I want to share in full disclosure that it's been a wonderful partnership. This has been very frustrating for anyone who has a child in the school system. It's been hard for administrators, staff, educators who love teaching and love celebrating education to be under restriction. So our goal is not to restrict it, is to allow as much opportunities as possible.
And I would, I would think, Andre, I agree with that. Thank you for that. And I think that, you know, last year, there was really no graduation. We had a whole year that was missed. And so I think providing the opportunity that we can this year, you know, is a really positive thing. I think students and, and parents and teachers would all be grateful.
I'd just like to add that I'm confident schools are going to do the right thing and relieved that the school leaders are, you know, have the ultimate say on, on what will happen on graduation day. Schools have been created, creative during this pandemic, and they've had plans on how they are doing their instruction, and I'm sure they're going to have a very memorable graduation. Where I don't want to go is make recommendations that violate the Washington roadmap to recovery plan. I don't want to go there and put ourselves in legal jeopardy. Some of the concerns I had with this and us recommending to have more attendees, I think it'll be more difficult to manage and enforce the guidance and requirements. And it'll also make it more difficult to do contact tracing. If we do allow more people to attend graduation, would this board also be in favor of hiring more contact tracers at the Health District to help with, with the repercussions of having a lot of people at one place? And what about the school nurses? Are we going to help the schools hire more nurses to do the contact tracing there? Those are just some of my concerns. And also districts have to deal with MOUs and CBAs with the staff that have to work at the graduation and, and kind of manage these guidelines. And lastly, you know, this is kind of resembles something similar to unfunded and understaffed suggestions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments?
If I may, real quick, just want, you know, you all to know, to communicate with schools that they, if they need to talk about what it looks like to implement these guidance documents for their graduation ceremony, I, I'm more happy to jump on a Zoom meeting, potentially do a walkthrough of, of their venue on how to best implement these for them to have a successful and safe graduation. So I, we've done that since this pandemic started and businesses started reopening. So I, I believe it would only be fair to.
Thank you for that, Sean, because you and the team have done a great job with that. And I think it would just be the same service to our schools in terms of graduation. Thank you.
Mayor Byers, I'd like to add as well that we are a response-ready agency. And so when changes have happened, whether they're easy changes or difficult, whether they're on nights or weekends, whenever the community has asked for that support, we've responded. We would do no less for this. We recognize the emotional and community benefit to graduation. We recognize the importance of celebrating children through a difficult year. That is our commitment. And so we will follow the same process that we've done throughout this, which is to try to serve the public.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board on this subject?
Well, right now, Mr. Elliott, maybe you can help, but right now we have a motion and a second. We just had a long discussion on it. I am not clear what the actual wording of the motion is at this point. So could we have the motion read, please?
You want that clarification from me or Ryan? Do you have it?
Whoever has it.
One thing, Mayor, I would point out, I did see that on the agenda, this was listed as a board discussion item. So the idea here was to discuss this further at this, at this meeting. That's the way it was laid out. So to that extent, I do have what her motion was written down. Ryan, do you have it?
Yeah. I do have it. All right.
Whichever one wants to read it.
I've got it if you don't have it yet.
Okay, yep, I just, just pulled it up. So. All right. Okay, the Yakima Health District Board. No, that's the wrong one.
I know what it is, but I want you to say it verbatim.
The Yakima, okay, the Yakima Health Board recommends that schools pursue plans allowing for fifty percent capacity of outdoor venues, even if that exceeds four hundred.
Got it. Was that correct, Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, Mr. Elliott.
Okay, that is the motion. Is there a second?
There was already a second and discussion.
Okay.
And I, I do want to share again, full disclosure, that everything that is being asked of us in terms of working with schools, supporting creative solutions, discussing options with the state and allowing for opportunity for a well-supported and attended graduation is what we wish to do. But again, my concern is that by adopting this motion, we would be placing ourselves in legal jeopardy.
Thank you for that, Mr. Fresco. They are all very arbitrary. So if it's just a matter of some tape, making some sections, perhaps we'll get it done.
Any further comments?
I'd like everyone to just try to wait one day, see what happens.
There's, there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Would you like to do roll call?
Oh, yes, do a, do a roll call if you would. I'm sorry.
So, so the motion, once again, if, if you vote for it, you're voting for the Yakima Health Board to recommend that schools pursue plans allowing for fifty percent capacity of outdoor venues, even if that exceeds four hundred. So please signify by either saying aye or no. Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindy?
No.
Mayor Byers?
No.
Nyla Dubal?
No.
Dr. Atterberry?
No.
And Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Okay, the motion, there's one in favor and five not in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item then. Yes, item C.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We're at item C, Board of Health Draft Resolution Discussion. If you recall, our last discussion involved a presentation by the prosecuting attorney's office. They explained the legal merits of the Board of County Commissioners ordinance. And so tonight, I think it would be prudent to review the resolution discussion that has been broached in terms of having a resolution from the Board of Health. And I'd ask that the position of the Health District be discussed and the legal ramifications be discussed by the Attorney of Record for the Health District, and that's James Elliott. So James, if you would, share your thoughts, please.
So just kind of recap where we are right now. There's a new Yakima County Code six point oh four that went into effect on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Through the last three months, you've learned through this discussion that the Board of County Commissioners has identified that there are still some changes that need to be made to that code, based on how it was written as it currently exists. There were comments that it did not meet what they were intending to do. And this is an important point, and we'll get through this in a second. In addition to this, you've heard from me the portions of that code that this Board of Health can be forced to adopt through a resolution based on the statutory authority found in RCW seventy point oh five point oh three oh. That statute, RCW seventy point oh five oh three oh, identifies a limited authority of the Board of County Commissioners after a health district has been created. And as we've learned multiple times and talked about a couple different times, this health district has been around for over a hundred years. In our last special meeting, you heard from two prosecutors who explained that the Board of County Commissioners, and I want to make sure I get this right, quote, might possibly, end quote, and arguably maybe, end quote, have the authority to do what they did. And, and the basis for this, Mr. Brucek and Mr. Anderson identified was RCW seventy forty-six oh three one. This statute, if you look at it, discusses the creation and organization of a health district. And you heard the two prosecutors essentially claim that this statute, seventy forty-six oh three one, allows the Board of County Commissioners to draft a resolution or an ordinance relating to any matter of the health district. The phrase that they used was any other matters, quote unquote, which means essentially anything and everything. And more importantly, the comments that came from Mr. Brucek and Mr. Anderson, is this right to draft this resolution or ordinance covering anything and everything lasts throughout the entire existence of a health district? That was essentially their explanation at the last meeting they were at. Now, I'm happy to walk you through, and, and I'm willing to do that if you want me to, in just a minute, why this reading is incorrect. But more importantly, I think where this board needs to get to right now, and kind of where I wanted to focus my legal advice for you is this. This Board of Health is in a position now where it really should wait on any action to adopt a resolution. I had drafted a draft resolution for discussion, I believe it was January twenty-seventh of this year. And that was a draft resolution for discussion purposes. My legal advice would be for this Board of Health to not take any action to adopt any resolution related to this County Code six point oh four until after the Board of County Commissioners makes all the changes that they need to make to the current Yakima County Code. So that the Yakima County Code six point oh four can go back and can say what it is that they intended to create. As I stated before, there's been a couple of different instances in which we've learned that as it's written is not actually what was intended. Now, again, my legal advice is for this Board of Health to wait to adopt any resolution related to that county code until after those changes are done and finalized. The reason why is actually really simple. If this Board of Health adopts a resolution, say at our next board meeting, and we adopt some of the portions of our Yakima County Code six point oh four as it's currently written, and then the Board of County Commissioners goes back after that and makes further changes to the Yakima County Code. then this Board of Health essentially could be back in the same exact position again later on down the line. That would be, at least to one degree, considered probably a waste of additional time and money. In reality, what should happen is if there are changes that need to be made to the Yakima County Code, the next step really in this process should be the Board of County Commissioners goes back and begins the process of creating an ordinance that says what they intended to say. It would start with a resolution. It would, the Board of County Commissioners would publish notice for a proposed ordinance, would allow for an opportunity for a public hearing to take place where the public can offer their comments, et cetera, about what the proposed ordinance would be. We've heard many complaints through the last couple of months by people who have identified how they felt as though things were done either in the cover of darkness or sort of in a untransparent way, or however people have phrased it in some of their comments. By going back and doing this process, it would allow for those written comments, that discussion to be done in its normal, regular course, which would be before the county commissioners, but not here at the Board of Health. Now, by doing this, this will prevent the misconceptions and the accusations and the confusion that really exists. I mean, tonight even, we had a discussion from Mr. Hatton. I appreciate Mr. Hatton, he's a key member of this community for years, but had confusion over what he identified as bylaws, et cetera. I think by going back and doing this process, it allows a correction of the misconceptions, accusations, confusion. And as Dr. Atterbury said a couple of different times, "so that this would pass the smell test," I think was the phrase he used. And another one was to take away that concept that the commissioners look like they're on a power grab. I think by going back and doing this process, it would then create a county code that is meeting their intentions, that passes through that process. And then, once that's completed, then this Board of Health, in my legal opinion, should then consider adopting a resolution based on whatever that final version is. Until then, this just continues to be sort of an extension of time and money. Now, to the extent that this board wants me to walk through the extent of why the prosecutor's position was incorrect, I'm happy to do that. But at this point in time, I wanted to give you what my legal advice is for this board and then allow a discussion to happen. And then if we want to walk through the two different statutes and how you actually read statutes together, I'll be happy to educate this board.
Mr. Elliott, thank you for that. I would like to interject and state that everything that was done by the county commissioners exceeded the requirements by law for the purposes of holding public hearings and advertising. So I want to make sure that we get that very clear. You've also indicated in previous comments.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to state that you did. I said that there are comments that were made by people, Commissioner. And make, make clear, I was not making the accusation. I'm just saying, it's been raised, I know, in written comments. That's what I intended to say.
Correct. So I want to make sure we're also clear that that's not a statement of fact on your part, but that was something that's been brought up by a few people, and it is not fact. You've also brought up several times, this board, though, can choose to voluntarily do what it wishes. Is that also true?
That's true. Yeah, I, I think in my presentation on January 27th, I believe that was fairly clearly stated multiple times. Yes.
Thank you. We also have been provided by Mr. Iback several different examples. In fact, I think every example, a chart, would show all the different ways that the health boards in the state of Washington for different counties and health districts are comprised. On, on first glance, it seemed to match what we had seen. I know when I had done what limited research to kind of familiarize myself with our health board, that there are 15 separate health districts in the state of Washington that are comprised of just the three county commissioners. Further, there are several others who the three commissioners have added to other members of the public. So it is very common in our state to see health boards that are by design, county commissioners have the majority vote. And they all have elected officials who retain the majority vote as well, whether that be a combination of commissioners and/or other electeds. In our case, we have Mayor Byers, who sits on our board with us, representing the city, and Ms. Duval, also representing a city municipality. We also saw that King County Health District, all their county commission council persons, I believe they're called, sit on their health board. And interestingly, each of them have two votes, so that they are insured even in their nature of that makeup of the board to have a majority. So I think it's important to note that it is very common practice in the state of Washington, across King County to Yakima County, to see the commissioners, who are the legislative elected body and the voice of the people, to have the final say in matters related to public health, because we are here to represent the people and to consider all aspects of how public health decisions impact the lives and livelihoods of the people we were elected to represent.
Further comment?
Well, I guess, Commissioner Anderson, I might add that, yeah, I appreciate Commissioner McKinney's comments here because obviously, anything that we have done to try to assert a little more standardization and a little more authority on the behalf of commissioners, and I will grant that, is not putting us in any way out of line with, with other, with what other counties have done. In fact, it would still, would still leave us in the position that many other counties have much more authority given them to the, to the county commissioners than we do here in Yakima County. That having been said, this may not be the time or place for it yet, but maybe it is. I, I do get, understand Mr. Elliott's comment about the fact that we would have to, if we're making a resolution here, there's a possibility we have to go back and maybe make a change to the county code in some sense, if we make some kind of alteration. I, I do have a couple of suggestions for, for amendments or resolutions that perhaps the board could entertain. But if this board passed it tonight, that would mean that, that we would probably have to go back and, and revisit this as a Board of County Commissioners. One of them has to do with the issue of what the nominating committee might look like. But I'll, before, before entering that, I will allow for further discussion.
Commissioner Anderson, I was hoping we could recognize Ryan Iback, who's had his hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one correction to Commissioner McKinney's, one of her statements, was that 15 health districts in the state of Washington was the majority of county commissioners. And there's not even 15 health districts in the state of Washington. She might have been combining the health district and health department. It's just important to make sure to differentiate between the two.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Yes, I'd like to share, Commissioner, if you don't mind. Certainly, this process was done so legally, but the precedent in terms of transparency in, in the past regarding the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Health was to work collectively when there were changes to ordinance and resolutions. And that was not something that happened this time. In fact, it was a surprise that the process was happening, both, I think, for board members and certainly for staff at the Health District. And I would share that I understand the importance of the role that the Board of County Commissioners plays in the health and safety of our community. But I would also add that every board member has a responsibility, serving on this forum, to protect the welfare and safety of all residents of our county.
At that point, Director Fresco, I think it's important to note again, why we are even where we're at now. And that is because the previous board made significant errors in judgment on motions that they put forward, which resulted in them vacating their seats on the board. So that is the catalyst and the reason why the Board of County Commissioners needed to get involved and make sure that there were more clarifying guidelines for this board. I know that we've also discussed, moving forward, entertaining sometime later this summer or fall, putting together some bylaws that are providing more guidance. And to Mr. Elliott's point, Mr. Hatton's comment referred to bylaws that do not exist. And that is something that we have brought up multiple times as being something that needs to occur. I will state that it was very beneficial, and I appreciated the staff putting together a first health board orientation, which all of us took part in, in, in separate meetings, so as not to have a majority, but that was very helpful. And I do appreciate, Ryan, you and staff putting that together.
Commissioner McKinney, if I may add, I, the collective will of the board has always been to not have more structural bylaws. I would welcome that, and I understand the value of that. But again, that's something that could be achieved as a Board of Health. I do want to share that in the middle of a really taxing, difficult disaster response, the cost legally and the cost to staff time has been immense with the changes to the ordinance and the potential for resolution change, which again adds to the burden of placing our main focus on the health and safety of the community.
There's also one thing I know that has been brought up, and that is the legislative action that was potentially going through and moving through, and a lot of us have been following it, 1152. And it went, it's become a completely different bill than it, and it first began. And I do think it's important to note that its present iteration would change this board to a board of six, with the three county commissioners being the core members of the board, who would then appoint three other members of the community. So I would like to make note of that. It has not passed yet through. We have about two more weeks, but that is currently what the legislature is entertaining. Again, three county commissioners who would appoint three other members of the community.
Further comment?
Yes, I would like to say that, first of all, I also appreciate the orientation provided to the new Board of Health members. In my position at the mayor of the city and, and conducting council meetings, we, you know, we use the parliamentary procedures, Robert's rules of orders, basically. And I think that even though Andre has, you have some concern about, you know, the time are expensive, that I think that having, that's what I'm looking for, having procedures in place adopted by the board, I think, would be helpful and clarifying, because it will clarify things, particularly if, as Commissioner McKinney said, if 1152 does go through and we end up with a board with six members, then we will have tie situations. And in that case, we will need to make a determination by either our own guidelines or by Robert's rules and orders, how we will handle tie votes. And so there's a couple of different ways to look at that. I just, you know, I think that, I think it will be helpful for us to, to wait until 1152 either passes or does not pass to clarify that. But I think it will be helpful to have those guidelines in place, procedures in place, you know, for the board. I have to honestly say, I was surprised at the number of health districts. Ryan, thank you for providing the information, that actually do allow one or more members to have more than one vote. So, and for my thinking, as I asked the question previously, why the chair was given two votes? It was to break a tie, you know, in a rare occasion where we have a tie. If we use Robert's rules of order, you know, there's a couple of different ways that can go, or we can create our own bylaws and decide how that will go. But if we, if we're, if we're moved to six members, we're going to have that situation more often. And we really need to have something in place to determine how that's going to be broken. You know, how a tie can be broken or, or not. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Right now, I'd just like to hear more from Mr. Elliott and his interpretation.
Are, are you referring to the way the two statutes work together, Ms. Duval? Is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
So I, and hopefully you all had a chance to actually read 7046031. I was trying to encourage everybody to do that at the last meeting. When Mr. Brusick and Mr. Anderson raised it, as I, as I read it, I had identified some language in there. And, and really, they kept pointing the idea the two work together. Well, the idea is, in, in theory, they do, and you can read them together fairly easily. Essentially, the idea is 7005030 identifies that normally the Board of County Commissioners is the Board of Health unless a county in part of a health district created under 7046. So that's actually how you read it. This is a health district. Once the health district has been created under 7046, how that creation happens is actually the statute that they were referring to, 7046031. That was the one that they were relying on, they were talking about. And if you read it, and, and hopefully you all did, it talks about the creation of a health district. It talks about the idea of organizing a health district. I mean, these are the ideas that give expansive authority to county commissioners on that initial resolution or ordinance that creates the health district. And it laid out the ability to specify these things, membership, representation, other matters. But the only power to do this is in the initial resolution or ordinance. That's what that whole statute's talking about. Once a health district has been created, then the rules that guide the health district are in 7005. That's the point of 7005. And once it's created, the powers are limited related to what the county commissioners can do. Those are found in 7005030. And those powers are limited in the areas that we've discussed before. They're laid out specifically in that statute. To put it in simple terms, the prosecutor essentially showed up and said that there's greater power in that initial creation. I agree with that. But once it's created, 7005030 limits what the county commissioners can do related to a health district. Very specific. It identifies those things as compensation, spanning the size, appointment term, and reimbursement. Those are very specific, laid out items that they can handle. And that's it, once a health district is created. Now, the prosecutor tried to explain that 7046031 basically means that the ability to create a resolution or an ordinance for any other matter, meaning everything and anything, continues throughout the entire existence of a health district. Well, if that's the case, essentially what that results in is the language in 7005030 would be rendered meaningless. There'd be no reason to have specific limitations on the county commissioner's authority related to a health district if, based on the prosecutor's argument, they could have the authority to do whatever they want, whenever they wanted, as long as the health district existed. So I, I, I don't think.
Elliott, can I ask you another question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sure.
I think we've touched on this before. But I think you brought it up that if the commissioners, there are commissioners, the way it's written, that the commissioners could go back to a board of three.
No, I've never stated that in any meeting that we've had here, Commissioner.
Well, then I must have misunderstood, because I, I believe that there have been commissioners and maybe there were boards rather than districts. But it would be interesting to see if there have been any changes made afterwards by other health districts and boards.
It's interesting that you bring that up, because Don Anderson was really excited about the very last sentence in 7046031 that talked about the ability of the legislative authority to change. And I want to make sure I get the language right. He pointed out, "the health district exists and shall continue unless and until changed by affirmative action of legislative authority." He was all excited about this as it relates to our issue here. But the reality is, what that's saying is, in 7046, there is one exception to what the county commissioners can do under normal circumstances. And I'll come back to that in a second. Under 7046090, it talks about the withdrawal of a county from a health district. So under 7046090, under normal circumstances, the county could, and the county commissioners could make a decision to withdraw. But the reason why I say under normal circumstances, and I'm glad you brought up whether other districts have done this, because over in Tacoma Pierce County, they had a very similar issue, where certain members tried to essentially disband from a health district. And the governor came in in an emergency proclamation. I don't remember the date, but I'm pretty certain the number is 20. And the governor came in in an emergency proclamation. I don't remember the date, but I'm pretty certain the number is 20-78. I may be incorrect in that, but it was an emergency proclamation that was created to essentially say. That anybody who tries to withdraw or drop out of a health district. Cannot do so unless certain things are met. And there's layouts of how it can be done, working through the secretary of health. Working through the department of health. There are specific requirements that are in there. So what I would say is to the, to the comment that Mr. Anderson had about the ability of the legislative authority to change things. Under 7046090, the legislative authority could withdraw under normal circumstances. But now that the emergency proclamation of the governor, 20-78, I think that's the number. It was done in response to Tacoma Pierce County situation where they were trying to do essentially the same thing, withdraw. And the governor came in sort of in the last minute, said you can't. I have seen multiple.
He decided he made it, he needed to make an emergency proclamation.
Excuse me?
I just, it's curious that he felt he needed to make an emergency proclamation.
Well.
That might likely have been legally allowable up until he made the emergency proclamation. Mr. Elliott, I would just like to say that you are a fine attorney and you know that I think that and believe that. And I appreciate your guidance to this board. I will also state though that I have high confidence in Mr. Joe Bruce and Don Anderson. And I, I wish that they were here right now to be able to speak to your comments with what, with much more. Knowledge base to draw from than certainly I have.
Well, I, I appreciate hearing the compliment. I, 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 I want to say that I, I think Mr. Bruce did, they did explain the position. They did focus where they were. All I'm saying is you asked the question related to a situation. And I'm trying to answer it. And it is 2078 and you asked about his emergency. Power. I'm not going to get into whether he has that power or not. That's not my place. But sort of some of the points you made is the importance of not disrupting the administration of health districts. It, it's worth reading and, and in fact, it's kind of interesting because I have followed most of the iterations of 1152. I've not seen this most recent one that you identified. But most of 1152 iterations have also included this specific language about dissolving. What can and can't be done, reorganization sort of things. I, I, that's addressed in each of the iterations that I've seen. Although in fairness, I have not reviewed the most recent one, but sort of a concern from the legislature about. Taking power away and moving it is, is pretty clear if you read through those, those versions of 1152.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I agree with Mayor Byers that I do think that because 1152 has changed so much. Since it started to, to go through the process, that it would be very interesting to see what happens in the next two weeks. So I am, I am very much in favor of tabling this until our next meeting to see if we have any resolution to that bill. If it, if it passes and what it might look like. Because again, to your point, Mr. Elliott, this might be a fruitless cause. We might have to do this all over again. Especially if it goes through with three commissioners and three new board members being appointed.
So Commissioner McKinney, is, is that a motion?
I would, yes, because why wouldn't it be lovely if we could get done on time tonight? I would, I would love to make a motion that we table this discussion until our next meeting.
I will second that motion.
Moved and seconded to table the motion, the, the motion to change. I can't even repeat it. I think everybody knows what it is. Any further discussion?
Can, can I just ask one clarifying question? You said to the next meeting, do you mean the next special meeting? Do you need, do you mean the next board meeting? I mean, we've kind of taken this issue up under special meetings. I just want to make sure we're, we got that right.
Personally, I would like to see it discussed at the next board meeting, regular board meeting, since we're our meeting consistently. I think we've just decided that going forward every two weeks, so I would like to keep it and keep going and keep it timely. It may be that the, depending upon what happens, it, you know, we might end up tabling it again, but I'd certainly like to see it come up on the regular board meeting.
That's a, that's Commissioner Lindy making the second, is that a, will you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, I'll, I will accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
I will second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded with amendments to table this motion. And until the next regular board meeting, which is on.
Twenty eighth.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I actually have a question. In, in the meantime, is it appropriate or would it be appropriate for the commissioners to start making the changes? To their county code 6.04 of what they had intended? That way, we can actually adopt a resolution?
It is not appropriate. There's sequential things that need to occur. We're required to announce things weeks in advance if we are going to make any change, which would come after this next discussion. So it would not be appropriate at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner, yeah, I'm wondering, Commissioner, if, if in our next meeting when, when we're discussing this. If even the board could have a, a little discussion and clarifying to, or the commissioners could have a little discussion clarifying to the board what their intentions were. Well, no, we're looking at moving forward, not making those changes, but just clarifying what the intentions were.
Certainly, I think one was pretty self-explanatory. It was the tie to, or excuse me, the additional vote by the chair to break a tie. But yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anderson, if I may, just one more clarification. 1152, as I understand it, is also going to include at this point. A period of time to allow for discussion statewide for implementation. And I don't believe it's actually going to be expected to be adopted quickly. So I did want to share that with major changes as we've seen and as we're all become accustomed, there is a period of clarification. And so I'm looking forward to hearing what the decision is, but there will also probably be many points that need to be clarified as well.
Thank you. Andre, that's, that's correct. I think from what I read from the last reading is that if there's a, if this bill passes and there's a change to the composition of the board that has to take place. I think the date is July of 22, if I recall.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Fresco.
Further comment? Hearing none. I will ask for a roll call.
The motion has been to table. The motion, so signified by Chief Anderson, or no? Commissioner McKinney? Commissioner Lindy? Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Natalie Duval?
I.
I.
And Chair Anderson?
I.
We have six in favor.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item D, health officer recruitment update. And we have just about 26, 27 minutes left before 7:30.
Yes, thank you. So at our last meeting, there was discussion about having interview questions and a matrix. Regarding how we would rate candidates and a process. And so there were questions from the board about how that would work. I'm going to share this time with Ryan, who can get into far more clarity than I can, if you would, Ryan.
Yes, a draft of the interview questions and scoring matrix has been sent to all the boardmen, members except for Dr. Attaberry, who is a candidate. And then also I sent to all the board members a list of items to consider how we want to move forward. That's a pretty extensive list. There's a lot to talk about. And so at this point, Chair Anderson, I don't know how you want to proceed discussing the, proceeding with the recruitment process.
Would it be appropriate for Dr. Attaberry to? Just continue being part of a meeting?
I can, I can drop voluntarily at this point, if that's okay with everybody.
I, I would recommend that staff be able to call Dr. Attaberry back. So that he knows that it's appropriate to log back into the meeting.
Yeah, sure, I have my cellphone.
Thank you. One of, one of the things, if I may, Commissioner Anderson, we had talked about specific questions. Ryan did contact a number of different health departments to determine questions. And also when we talk about a matrix, it's just a fancy way of saying how we're going to rate people. The whole question is to have a reasonable and structured process to be able to rate. Someone's qualifications, their ability to answer questions. Ryan, do you want to go into some of that backstory?
Yes, what, what, one thing I do want to mention, I know Dr. Attaberry did leave the meeting, but it is being recorded. So anything that is being stated, of course, any of the candidates would be able to, to, to hear.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ryan.
Do we also know if any other candidates are taking part in this call right now and would it be appropriate to ask?
Good point.
I do not see any other candidates.
Has everyone identified themselves who's on the call?
Victoria, has everyone identified themselves?
They have not. However, I did write down the names that are on there and none of them do match the descriptions that I have for the board of health candidates.
There's unfortunately the one person that just says guests, so there's no way to know that.
Sorry, they did, the guest did identify themselves, that particular guest.
But I would suggest that we not go into any specifics about the questions or the matrix. It's just the reality that we have asked for clarity from other departments. They've given us reasonable questions and structure, which is what we were looking for. And then there were a number of questions that Ryan had brought up that had to do with certainly the environment of staff. The timeline, the process and so forth.
Yeah, so I did reach out to Snohomish County Health Department and the Kitsap County Health Department. Who have in the last few years have also recruited health officers to get some sample questions and, and grading metrics. So, so from the questions come from counties and so kind of incorporate them all into, into one. So that's what you received. So, so one of the questions that we had as far as the, the process is. Who would be involved in the, in the interviews? I think at one point, the all board of health members figured if they were interested in being a part of it and also YHD staff. But if there's any input on, on how we want to continue on the actual interview, on who's going to be part of the interview. I do, all, all six, all six board members have expressed interest in being part of it. And I do know that myself, Andre, Melissa, we're very closely with a health officer. So if I was got offer recommendation, at least the three, the three of us staff also be included with the, the six board members.
You know, when we hired city manager, because the council had that, the authority for the hiring. We had a process where we had a, a citizen interview process, a staff interview process. Their recommendations and assessments were then given to the city council who had an opportunity to read those before they conducted their interviews. And city council, because they had that authority made final decision. So that may be one thing to consider.
I would concur, Mayor Byers. That was going to be my suggestion that I do think it's important for staff to be involved. But I do not believe that staff should have any final decision-making, that it should be a board decision.
Right. Any other comments?
Okay, so moving on to the next question was, will the interviews consist of all the interviewers all at the same time? In which it would have to be public, a public health meeting or breaking it down to smaller groups of less than three board members per me, per interview?
I'm personally supportive of it being public and having all six board members present. I, I think that this, this person is going to be the doctor for 258,000 people. And so we should make sure that everyone has the opportunity who wishes to, to take part in the interview process. With noting that I, I would say that it would not be open for public comment or questions. That could be quite a long interview.
Good point.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it should be public for, for a lot of very good reasons. But the ultimate decision does, would lie with the board of health. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, did you have something?
No, I'm just asking for other comments.
Then would we make the questions beforehand available to everybody? Since it's not going to be there for the first person that we interview, they're not going to know the questions.
I personally don't have a problem with sharing the questions ahead of time. As I looked at some of the questions, I think it might, it would be nice for them to have a little time to think them over. When we get to that point though, I'll also state that I actually would like to propose an additional question. And I have actually emailed that to the members of the board with the exception of Dr. Attaberry. I just sent it off about five minutes ago. As well as to Ryan and to Andre.
Thank you to Commissioner Lindy. I was going to say that I do think that if, knowing that we've all received them, that it would be nice for us all to have a certain timeline. To which we knew that we needed to respond for any questions that we wanted to add or clarify. So that we could have another discussion to confer about how we want to adjust the questions from your initial proposed questions.
Yeah, and we can maybe at the, at the end, we could discuss timeline.
Okay, and Commissioner McKinney, we'd be, we'd welcome the input of the board in terms of questions. So perhaps we could start by board members emailing those questions to Ryan.
Ryan, you should have mine, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, Commissioner Lindy, we did receive that.
All right, thank you.
Now, to back up just real quick on who's involved in the interview. So staff and board of health are, are involved in the interview. There's a grading metrics. If we go on with that, would the staff that's part of it be part of the grading metrics? But then the final decision on a vote would just be board members.
I would, I would suggest against that. No, I think that it'd be important to have your input as to, you know, how the interview went. And your impressions, but I do not believe you would, the staff should be involved in the grading. I would consider that being a, a large part of the decision that I think lays in the hands of the board.
I think, you know, one of the ways to do that, and it may take a little more time, but each of the city manager applicants went through three separate interviews. One with the citizen committee, then the citizen gave feedback, one with the staff, the staff gave feedback. Then information went to the council. They conducted the third and final interview and had their discussion and made the decision.
So Mayor Byers, was there actually a grading metrics, matrix for those interviews or was it just more input?
Well, it was input from the board and then we had, you know, we had our own questions that we asked. And then we had council discussion and a vote was taken.
Actually think it would be appropriate for the staff to provide input on the matrix. Since they are the subject matter experts on public health and. And what is a good health officer.
I think that they could still do that and then provide that information to the board who would take it into consideration and, and do their own interview on matrix.
I don't, for my part, I don't have a problem receiving input from the health district. I would welcome that. I just don't want it to be set up in a way that it would actually tie the board's hands.
Is it further comment?
I think if we keep it to their, their written observations as opposed to making any recommendations.
Commissioner McKinney, I'd like to counter that, please. Part of the reason that we're here is to provide. I have the tendency to use the term subject matter expertise, but really real world experience in public health and oversight. I think it would be a disadvantage if the board does not hear whether we have recommendations or concerns. Because again, this person will not only have the ability to serve over 250,000 people. But will have immense responsibilities and we want to make certain that you are afforded all opportunity to understand. The complexity or concerns that we have about their abilities or concerns about their inability.
I don't disagree. That's why we're going to have a great deal of opportunity to ask a lot of the questions and all of them so far that you've proposed. So we'll get a lot of insight based off the responses to the questions that you've provided to us.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further comment?
Okay, so the next issue is um usually about forty-five minutes to an hour per interview. Is that good? If, you know, we, we do have twelve draft questions. There could be some additional ones, like Commissioner Lindy added. Um, probably eight would be, I think, of a fair amount for a forty-five minute interview. If we do more than eight, then we might need more time.
Okay. Well, I, I think that's a consideration, but uh I'm not concerned about if it's forty-five minutes or an hour each, uh, because this is going to be a long-term commitment.
Yeah, and that, that kind of leaves the next one is, is finding, you know, um, six interviews, forty-five minutes, three and a half hours. It's, it's hard to find a time for, you know, for a special meeting, let alone six interviews. Um, it might expand over, over a week period to find the time.
Well, and I think it might depend on uh the uh candidate uh time schedules, too.
I would just like to say.
At the county here, we've, we've uh done interviews over two or three days because of scheduling by, by the particular candidates.
I, I am personally willing to meet in the evenings, or even if it needs to take place over weekends, to accommodate everyone's schedules, knowing that we're going to have six people to try to coordinate schedules with, who are all working uh as well as staff, as well as uh the individuals who are interviewing. So um I, I propose that, that I, I know that I'm willing to do it in the evenings or on the weekends if needed.
And I would state, I'm also willing to do it on evenings and weekends. I just don't want to do it on a Sunday.
What was that last part?
Um, I'm willing to do it on evenings and weekends, I, but I don't want to do it on a Sunday.
I'm supportive of that. Weekends, to me, I should have said on Saturday.
Okay, very, yeah. That's my church date, so.
Me too, I get it.
Yes, and if I may, uh, for your point of clarification, the uh, the interviews that would happen with staff, uh, we have the flexibility to uh do that collectively, since we're not elected officials. Does that meet with your expectations?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I concur that, yeah. There's, it does, that portion does not need to be public.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next issue is um how uh after the interviews, what we're going to do as far as the interviews go, if we do a scoring, a scoring matrix, do the top two candidates go on to the board for a final vote? Do, is it presented to, you know, how's it going to be presented to the board as far as for a vote?
Well, I don't know that if we're all six board members taking part in the interviews, I don't know that we need to, we're already, we are the the full board listening to e- every um interview in its entirety together. Um, so I, I realize that's different than how it's occurred before, because you were trying to move forward from a nominating committee, and then the board would consider. So I think in this case, we have the unique ability that everyone is going to be taking kick, part in the interview process.
I concur.
Ryan, I, I guess I'd like to clarify, are you asking about how the group would make decisions, or how everyone would rate their candidates?
Yeah, I, I guess the question is, is so once we, once everyone rates the candidates, and we have a score for each candidate, if we go that route, what do we do with that number at that point? Does that person automatically become the health officer? Is it, you know, do you present the top two scores to the board then, and then they decide um who, who the health officer is?
Well, I think the board, the entire board is going to be, have the discussion, and I think that the board can do that in executive session when discussing candidates. If I recall correctly, we can have an executive session solely for the discussion of qualifications for candidates for the position. Mr. Elliott, come back from the blacks, let me see you.
That's right, yeah, I, I, in fact, I think, I think Mr. Ibach provided you with the information, the guidance that was there related to the executive session uh language, that was from me, so I provided that to Mr. Ibach, so I could get that to all of you. So you knew what you could do and you can't do in order to be uh uh complicit with forty-two, thirty-one, ten. Um, there are limitations on what you can and can't do. We need to be very clear. So I want to get that to everybody in advance, so hopefully you've all seen that.
Thank you, sir.
So if I understand it correctly, for layman discussion, but not decision, correct, James?
Yes.
Yeah, essentially. I mean, discussion of qualifications is what's identified. There can't be any special votes or ranking, you know, so you gotta be, you can't do any of that special voting. You can't do any of that in executive session. So we've seen others get in trouble for that, so we're not going to do that.
Right.
Well, if I may, that may be an opportune time for uh people like Ryan and myself to convey the perspective of the board, if you wish.
I would prefer that the executive session would be just the board, but I thank you for that. I think we'll have an opportunity to meet with you and hear staff's input, um but ultimately, I think the executive session would, should be just the board.
Um, usually in the past, when um we go into executive session, um and what ends up happening is when we come out of it, there's usually, there, there's a nomination by a board member for somebody to be considered um as, as the health officer. Is that something that we can do? Um, take nominations from board members to um to go to be considered a, a health officer?
I think that coming after the discussion.
Yeah, after, after the discussion.
Yeah, we can't take a vote, or just draw a poll, or, or do even do ranking. We simply have a discussion. And coming out of that, then they're back into the board meeting publicly, then there are any motions made, yes.
So then, so then it sounds like the, on the executive session, you discuss qualifications of candidates, and then afterwards, it, it would be a nomination period where anyone can nominate any of the met candidates.
I think that's appropriate.
Correct.
And then I guess um at, at that point, then I think that uh maybe that kind of uh rules out the, the suggestion there about presenting the top two candidates with highest score. It sounds like we're just going to have a discussion.
Yes.
About the candidates and their merits or, you know, qualifications respectively.
I concur.
However, because of, um, because we're ma- sorry, because we are making these um meetings public, I think it would be nice if we did provide the public with um the results of the scoring matrix, so that they are, we are being transparent, and we um are letting the public know um who was a top candidate.
I concur that we, we're able to disclose as much as we, we are able. I, I, Mr. Elliott, our applications such as that, I don't know if there are any restrictions that we would be bound to if someone completes an application that has personal, I, I'm not sure. If there's any, I'm sure you'll keep us in the straight and narrow.
Yeah, I, I mean, to the extent that we're involved in these executive session, I will be there and be able to talk through those things, and I can give you some warnings about things we should or shouldn't do. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, I've looked at the questions, so I generally know what's there. I, I don't know how much personal information might be there that, you know, might create issues, but to the extent that I see it, I'll, I'll try and identify it there.
Thank you. Brian?
Okay, and then the final issue is just timeline. When we want to do interviews, what, at what, do we do it at a board meeting where we do the nominations, or do we do it after the last interview?
I think a board meeting would be more appropriate.
So if we work backwards, if we have a special board meeting, the middle of May, the goal would be have the interviews done, and the middle, the middle of May, the May twelfth meeting would be where the nominations would take place.
I think that's pushing it. I think, I think that's a little.
I think the end of the month, excuse me.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned about that and timing, I'm.
Because we're, we have a lot of uh variables here, the candidate uh schedule, timing, our, uh, your, you're the staff, and our, the board's timing. Uh, I would, I would recommend that we, we are do it at the, by the end of the uh May.
The question is, do we want to do it at a regular board meeting, or do we want to do it at a special board? So the end of May, or the middle, or the second week of June?
I don't know that it matters. I think we've, we've kind of identified that these meetings are kind of every two weeks now. Uh, one is noted as special, but um I'm open to either. I think we just, let's, let's just maybe aim for seeing how quickly we are able to come to an agreement on what these questions are. You know, that might take another week or two for us to coordinate, and then when we're in agreement, and then when we look at start scheduling, I mean, if this gets pushed into June, I think I'd rather set a date uh be, being open to either the special meeting or the regular meeting, depending upon how this progresses.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner McKinney. I'm reminded that there are an opportunity for, there is an opportunity for board members to share their thoughts on questions as well. Uh, and in fairness, uh, as you've seen, there are many changes based on the circumstances around COVID that take precedent. So thank you for your willingness to allow us to do that, and Ryan's very capable at creating a structure and a timeline. So if we could come back to you with some understanding of that, not tying us to any particular time, but letting you know how long it probably will take.
Right.
Sounds good.
Okay. We've got about four minutes left.
Perfect, and then so if, any input that you have on the metrics or the interview questions, let me know in the next couple days. And then, once we finalize it, I'll make sure we talk with, um, or let the, all the board know the final product, and then we'll, once that's set, we'll start setting uh interview.
Okay, and if you would, uh, Ryan, uh, keep, keep us apprised of uh the, the success you've been having with uh getting schedules done. Uh, not necessarily the names of the candidates, but you, you could say we have one interview scheduled for day X on, at hour Y, something like that. I, you know, I don't think it needs to be public as to who are going to interview. My point.
And Victoria will be the one reaching out to people to find out your availability.
Yeah.
For schedule of the interview.
Yeah.
So if it can be as flexible as possible, that would, that would help.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, I think, I think we've covered everything.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns on the recruitment process before?
I think you're gonna get it all co- collated and uh uh put, and have it ready to go, so uh you'll have a, you'll have a guide, guidance for that. Thank you for doing that, too. It's a lot of work. Any other comments or concerns before we adjourn?
Are you calling for other business?
Yes.
Uh, may I, if I may, I know it's symbolic at this point, but we should attempt to call Dr. Atterberry back if we stop. For, for all of two minutes, mind you, but I still think it's.
But before we call Dr. Atterberry back, can I just ask one quick question, or at least make one comment? In, in addition to what Ryan sent, and I was in the dark, Commissioner McKinney, I was taking a phone call. My grandma just passed away, so I was on the phone, I'm sorry.
Sorry to hear that, James.
The uh, I wasn't sure if you had pointed this out. I put an additional section on here on what uh Ryan had sent out about going in the executive session to discuss the qualifications, that there can be other staff members involved. You don't have to do that. And I laid out what it would require if you chose to do that. So i- if you covered that and I missed it, I'm sorry. But I just want to make sure that was my language that was put from the statute as well, so.
Thank you. We've decided not to have staff in the executive decision for that, but you, we would welcome to be there to permit, keep us on the straight and narrow.
I'm sure I will fail miserably at that.
Do we want to call Dr. Atterberry? Are we good?
Yep.
I think Victoria has called him.
Okay. Everybody looks so serious.
Well, who else is excited that it's seven-thirty, but it's still light outside?
Yeah, I still get to go for my walk tonight, so.
I'm excited that when I go out at six-thirty in the morning, it's now daylight to be.
Exactly, yeah.
Also, good news, yes.
And Nathan, I will say quickly, I'm glad that the wind has died down, because yesterday proved to be um, you know, quite the process for down there, but man, they battened the hatches down and.
Here's Dr. Vapp. Hey, Dr. Atterberry, you're back.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or anything before we adjourn?
I did have new business, but noting the time, what I would request at this point is that it be put on the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, I would like to discuss uh mask-wearing uh in youth, um kindergarten through high school uh when playing sports or physical activity outdoors.
Okay. All right.
And this, this for clarification, that, that's, you're talking just for outdoors activities, not, not indoor.
Commissioner McKinney, did you have an age range?
Well, no, no limit on the, the young level, but all the way up uh through eighteen or still in high school sports. I realize there are some nineteen-year-olds who are uh still just by by the chin of their chinny-chin-chin, still there for whatever reason, so I'd like to discuss that requirement uh as any outdoor physical play, whether it be recess or organized sports supported by private organizations or public school.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir. And I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Uh, any further comment?
Uh, I'd just like to um, I thank you for bringing up um that new topic and giving us notice ahead of time. That way we can look into it ourselves and do some research before um big things come before us. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good.
All in favor?
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, we should vote on the adjournment.
Well, well, I, I was gonna ask, Dr. Atterberry, kind of looked like you wanted to say something, but I'm not sure.
No, no, I'm fine.
All right, all right. Uh, okay, so we've had a motion, and we've had a second to adjourn. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't think we had to take roll call on that, Ryan, so. Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.